Is that was thirteen?
Yeah.
Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt? Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a proclamation for tonight. Whereas Red Ribbon Week, which will be celebrated October twenty-second to the twenty-seventh, is one of the nation's largest national drug prevention programs in America, today the red ribbon has become a symbol for drug, alcohol, and the back of abuse prevention all across America. And whereas Red Ribbon Week addresses two of the greatest challenges in drug prevention, one is debunking false perceptions about drug abuse, and two, encouraging sounds of sound life choices. And whereas Red Ribbon Week provides an incentive to motivate parents, law enforcement personnel, and community organizations to continue to educate and intervene in drug abuse. And whereas our school system will have activities each day supporting the fight against drug abuse. And whereas on Saturday, the twenty-seventh of October, two thousand and eighteen, at ten a.m., a red ribbon parade will be held with the theme, "Life is Your Journey, Travel Drug Free." Now therefore, I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim that the week of October twenty-second to the twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, is Red Ribbon Week here in the City of Moore.
Well, I will accept it on behalf of the Reverend Committee. I've served on that.
Okay.
So we really appreciate you in the city recognizing that week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is the, and by the way, we appreciate you serving on that committee. Item number two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October the first, two thousand and eighteen. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held August seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Item C is approve a contract extension with Silver Star Construction, excuse me, for on-demand construction services. Item D, approve a contract extension with Rudy Construction for on-demand construction services. Item E, approve a contract extension with Simron Construction for on-demand construction services. Item F, approve a contract extension with Community Development Services for technical assistance with the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Item G, accept a fifteen-foot public utilitiesment located in the southwest quarter of Section thirty-six, Township ten north, Range three west, being north of Indian Hills Road and east of Southeastern Avenue. Item H is approve and modify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of two million nine hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item number three is consider adoption of Resolution Number nine-one-one-eighteen pertaining to the general obligation bonds of two thousand and nineteen, approved by a majority of qualified voters in election held on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, fixing the amount of bonds to mature each year, fixing the time and place of bonds that are to be sold and authorizing the clerk to give notice of said sale as required by law.
Mayor and Council, this will be the first bond issue of the election from last June. This bond issue will go to, for further work on the Fourth Street underpass, to widen Thirty-Fourth Street, and to begin the drainage channel project from Northwest Fifth to Northwest Twelfth Street. Zach Robinson from our financial advisor, and Terry Hawkins, our bond counsel, are here to answer any questions.
Do you guys have any questions? Just for the public to know, these bonds have already been voted on and approved.
Yes, sir.
That's why I say that, make sure everybody knows. They're not new ones, they're new taxes.
That's correct.
Okay. Does this will get those in that?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider ordinance number eight-nine-three-eighteen, amending Section seven oh one and seven oh two of Part Eight, Chapter Seven of the Health and News and Security Code of the City of Moore to establish regulations prohibiting smoking in city-owned public parks, providing for repeater, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor and Council, in looking through our new codified code book, we realized and determined that for some reason, this ordinance had been left out. It had originally been passed, I believe, back in two thousand and twelve, and was in force and in full effect until we got our new code book. We looked at it, this was not in there, so would ask that we, that you would approve this to bring us back up to where we were before. And then, of course, the emergency on the next item.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Could you describe why it's an emergency and the difference between if we weren't to enact the emergency portion of this?
I feel that this is a health issue and does qualify for the health and welfare of other people using the park, not wanting to have to smell or be around other people's smoke. If you did not pass the ordinance, putting it into effect tonight or being effective tomorrow, it would be thirty days before it would be placed into the code book after approval. That would be the reason.
I just couldn't remember the thirty days portion, that's what I was curious about. Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of an emergency provision for ordinance number eight-nine-three-eighteen, it being immediately necessary for the preservation of the peace, health, safety, and public good of the City of Moore and the inhabitants thereof, that the provisions of this ordinance be put into full force and effect, and emergency is hereby declared to exist by reason whereof, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force and effect from and after the date provided therein, as provided by law.
Move to approve?
Second. Thank you both. We have a motion. Do we have anybody that wants to speak on this issue, emergency? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item passes. Item number six is consider lot split located in the northeast quarter of Section twenty-seven, Township ten north, Range three west, being located west of Fritz Boulevard and south of Southwest Nineteenth Street, application for Art of USA, yes, Community Development.
Mayor and Council, this property is located at seven-twenty Southwest Nineteenth Street, which is the target. On Nineteenth Street is currently zoned C-three. The applicant is requesting to split off approximately one and a half acres of the northwest corner of the lot to develop an inline shopping center with a proposed restaurant site. If this request is approved, the lot split would reduce the amount of parking available to Target to three hundred and thirty-seven spaces, whereas four hundred and sixty-three spaces are required by City Code. This has been taken up by the Board of Adjustment, and was, the reduction of parking was approved by the Board of Adjustment on August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in preparation for this lot split item. City sewer is available to serve the site, and city water must be extended through the site. The new lot will utilize an existing shared access drive to the west of the proposed lot, and no additional curb cuts be granted to Southwest Nineteenth Street at this location. Because the two resulting lots are in conformance with the surrounding development and our City Code, Staffordman's approval of this lot split application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are you okay with the reduced parking?
Yes, they, they are.
So can you give me the short version of how the calculation for required parking for commercial business like that is?
Yes, we use a, for retail, it depends on the square footage of the building. The larger the square footage is, the, actually, the less amount of parking spaces you're required to have per square foot. So for buildings such as Target, you're probably looking at two to three spaces per square foot. And it's actually per hundred of square foot. It's kind of a complicated formula, but there is a formula out there.
We don't believe this will cause that many.
No, this, if you are familiar with the area, this portion of the Target parking lot is never used. And I think that this is in keeping in line with what most of that development along Nineteenth Street is doing, which is reserving the frontage of the street for actual restaurants and shopping opportunities while the big box retailers are set back.
Burger.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider the purchase of a two thousand and nineteen Ford Escape from Bill Knight Ford from Oklahoma State Contract Number S W zero-three-five, in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted item. This is to replace a two thousand and three Ford F-150 in the Code Enforcement Division Fleet with a new two thousand and nineteen Ford Escape. We were budgeted twenty-nine thousand dollars for the vehicle, and we were able to secure it off of a state contract for twenty-two thousand and change. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Good job. That's good savings.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight, consider authorizing the purchase of two thousand and nineteen F-250 from Bill Knight Ford off the state contract Number S W zero-two-three-five, in the amount of thirty-three thousand six hundred and two dollars, using budget funds.
Mayor and Council, good evening. This, too, is a budgeted item. We're replacing the big blue pickup that we've driven for many years in our department. Do some swapping around, and the Assistant Director will probably drive the Expedition, I'll probably drive the new pickup. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did you save any money?
No, actually, we spent.
What? No kidding.
However, we'll make it up in the next item.
Okay, that's a good deal. Anybody want to make a motion on this item?
Make a motion, we approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? If not, this isn't pull the big trailer, or that's not a trailer, though, it's a mobile vehicle, right? The new safety vehicle?
The new mobile command post? No, it's, that's currently under construction in Montana.
Okay.
About a month.
All right, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider authorizing the purchase of ten mobile radios for the mobile command vehicle from Motorola Solutions Incorporated via Total Radio Incorporated off the state contract N A S O P, or N A S P O, excuse me, Number S W one zero-three-five-M, in the amount of fifty thousand seven hundred dollars and twenty-three cents, using budget funds to be reimbursed with grant monies from the Oklahoma Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management.
Mayor and Council, good evening. These are the public safety radios that will be placed into the new mobile command vehicle that's currently under construction. The radios are, this is a budgeted item, however, we've also secured a grant from the State Homeland Security Office, which will reimburse all of the cost of the radios.
That's what we're looking for. That's good work. Thanks. Do we have a motion on this item?
Make a motion that we approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Hey, just real quick, how's the command post going?
We, I spoke with the folks in Montana on Friday. They advise that it is on schedule, other than they don't have the chassis yet. They're still waiting on that. There's a backlog on purchasing, on being able to acquire those, they're in line. But other than that, the box is built, the lavatory's in it and finished, the air conditioners are on the roof, they were going to place the slide-outs today or tomorrow, so they still think we're on target for some time, Thanksgiving, first of December, somewhere in that timeframe.
Okay, great. Thank you, it's been a long time coming, I'll be glad to, when the city gets it.
Very excited about it.
What, twelve years? Something like that?
I'm sorry?
Twelve years?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, this'll be a nice, nice addition. Hope we never have to use it.
I hope you're right.
Okay. Did we get a motion?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Call for the vote.
Not yet, but I'll call. Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Item number ten is consider authorizing the purchase of twelve video cameras for installation on new police vehicles from WatchGuard Video off state contract N A S P O Number zero K M A one-four-five-zero-one-zero, in the amount of sixty-four thousand four hundred dollars, using budgeted public safety tax funds.
Mayor and Council, as you stated, is a budgeted item from Public Safety Sales Tax Funds to buy actually six cameras for new police vehicles that we should be receiving in December, and also to replace six of our older cameras.
Okay. Does that motion approve? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eleven is consider authorizing the purchase of a two thousand and nineteen F-350 for animal control from United Ford South E B A Bill Knight Ford off the state contract Number S W zero-three-five, in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Yes, this is a budgeted item, too, as well. It's to replace a two thousand and four F-250, also to pull our trailer, our emergency response and adoption trailer as well.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number twelve was consider acceptance of a quote from S W A B Wagon Company in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars for the purchase and installation of an animal transport body and equipment. This is from Public Works.
Mayor and Council, this is another budgeted item, recommend approval.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item thirteen, I've been asked to table this item. Anybody want to make a table and motion?
Make a motion to table item thirteen?
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. Would you call for the vote on the table motion, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, it is tabled. At this time, we recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item number fourteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held on October the first, two thousand and eighteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars twenty-two cents.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, it's a consent docket. Would you please call for the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item number fifteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held on October the first, two thousand and eighteen. Item B is approve a payment of a worker's compensation settlement in the amount of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars for CBR Claim Number Two zero-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-five-eight-nine, as a result of medication to Jose Garcia and authorized placement on the Adverum Tax Roll. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Move to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any, well, there's a consent docket, too. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. This time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting. Jason? Oh, oh, Adam. Item sixteen, roll call, we call a roll, please?
Mark Ham?
Here.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
And Adam Webb?
Here. Item seventeen is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting held September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Who's second? Danielle made the motion.
She first, she motioned, didn't she?
Louis.
Louis, doesn't matter.
Louis, okay.
Call for the vote.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting and convene the city council meeting. Okay, thank you. The record shows that all the members that were present before are still present. The, okay, we will recess that, and we go to number eighteen, which is new business. Item A is citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. We have one person signed up to speak. Brian?
Mayor and Council members, hi, I'm Brian Kerr, I own more liquor, and I am here on behalf of my mother, who owns Oklahoma Spirits and Wine. It's a wholesaler that recently opened up here in Moore. The reason I showed up and she didn't is because we were going to ask you to do something that's kind of a favor, and you could not possibly resist my mother. So if you wanted to say no, I figured it'd be easier to say no to me. The current structure of fees for liquor wholesalers is a bit onerous for people starting new businesses. The way that the laws were written by ABLE and by the legislature allows cities to charge up to what ABLE charges for the license, that's twenty-five hundred dollars in the case of a wine and spirits wholesaler now. The recent changes in Oklahoma liquor laws have created an opportunity for people like my mother to actually start a small wine and spirits wholesaler, which is a lot different than it was before the laws changed, is where you really needed millions of dollars to do this. And so a twenty-five hundred dollar ABLE commission fee followed by a twenty-five hundred dollar city fee was really nothing compared in the big scheme of things. Now it's something, because the small business is literally a small business. My mother doing this on a shoestring budget and trying to represent local products, including our very own Scissor Tall Distillery, which is whiskey made right here in Moore, Oklahoma. So I am asking the council and the mayor to consider either a delay of said fee at the city level, or a reduction, a permanent reduction of said fee at the city level, in order to give my mother and her business a better chance of surviving here in the City of Moore, as well as using that money, of course, to perhaps hire people to help her in her business. And I would be happy to take any questions, I appreciate your time tonight.
Have other cities made exceptions in the area? Do you know?
That is a fantastic question. I did absolutely zero research before I came in tonight. I came in, I came in actually just to watch the meeting, and then Linda said, hey, go ahead and refill this out, and then you can speak to them tonight. So I am, I do not believe that any cities have made exceptions. I can only speak to Danielle that in Dell City, where my wife had a retail package store, the fee for a retail package store license in Dell City was $50 a year. Moore, of course, is now $900 a year, that's the business I'm in, and so I know there are different fees for different cities, they don't always mirror the ABLE commission license fee, depending on what that city's trying to accomplish.
Can we find out, Brooks, how we compare with cities around the area?
Sure, be happy to look into it and report back to council.
Do any cities have a presumption for manufacturers in the city? That's something I don't know. I don't know.
Riven within a certain, underneath a certain thousands of dollars per year, because if we're talking about a smaller business, if it is really, you know, under 30 or 40, 50, I don't know what maybe the number is, but it does seem like that would be an astronomical fee if you're only doing a smaller amount of business.
I will tell you, Mayor, this is new ground, because there really, before the laws had occurred, there really had been only wholesalers in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, so, and Moore, of course, has not ever seen one before.
Right. Well, I'm not opposed to reducing the fee for somebody that's small getting started. I mean, that would seem like a natural thing, especially if they had a business here that was, you know, generating jobs and all that.
We would need to, as Danielle was speaking, we need to draw some, right, and, somehow...
It's so new, I don't, I don't know where to start on that.
No, I mean, we'd certainly be happy to look into it and come up with some criteria to see.
Are we in a time-long crunch here?
I don't, I don't believe we are, maybe Linda could speak to that. She's the one that always calls me and bothers me when I owe money. I mean, politely reminds me that I owe money.
I would be more than glad to kind of survey areas and present some information to Brooks. I do recall when we have our two distillers in Moore, that I think their fees were adjusted lower for them.
Okay.
It used to be higher. So we'll work on providing Brooks with some information.
I'd be curious, maybe in other states that have similar, is anyone, is what we do, if they've adjusted, you know, their rates. We might be the first one to adjust in Oklahoma, but since everything's changed, I wonder how they do it around the rest of the country, if there's similar.
As long as we can do some research and visit this at the next meeting, and if it doesn't cause your mother any difficulty, that would be...
We're not saying that, we're just not saying yes yet.
Well, I love that answer, actually. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cover signs on Fourth Street.
Okay, no one else has signed up, would anyone like to speak? Okay, any items from the City Council or trustees?
Let's have a couple of quick things. I know that the senior citizen, the Brand Center's going to be doing a bean fundraiser on the 20th of October, from 11 to 2, so encourage people to go out and support a Brand Center, all their fund goes towards the Moore Council of Aging, all of the fundraising that they'll do from that. And then I was, Todd, if you, you could probably address better than what I can, you can talk about just some of the things that are coming up at the end of the month for Honda Old Town and all that kind of stuff, please.
Be happy to. Thank you for texting me during the meeting, so I got to come a little bit more prepared. Fall's always a busy time for us when it comes to our events. Last Saturday, we had our arts and crafts marketplace, had a great turnout.